Ready? All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. If we will, we gonna call our first meeting of April to order. We'll ask everyone if you will put your phones on bribe eight or turn them off. May, all right, thanks for that correction. I'm just moving right along. Uh, we gonna ask, uh, our high sheriff to lead us in the prayer, and we gonna ask our comptroller to lead us in their pledge. All right?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning seeking your guidance and wisdom in all that we do for Madison County. We would ask you to be with this board today as they make decisions that would be in our best interest as a community and a state. We would ask for your loving touch for those who have lost loved ones recently and who may need your guidance, your comfort, your love. We would ask that everything that we do today be in your name and glorify you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, pledge salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's jump into our agenda. Rodney?
Yes, Mr. President, should have before you the April the 18th board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes to board, please approve said minutes.
All right, I entertain the motion.
Move.
Motion for approval.
Motion by, uh, second by Gerald. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Back from us is Ms. Jan Collins, concerned citizen. Good to see you, Jan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to, um, speak to the board and also thank you for all the work that you do for the county. We appreciate you. And, um, the Madison County Business League and Foundation and the Madison County Economic Development Authority created the new Madison County Executive Leadership Class in 2020. The mission of the Madison County Executive Leadership Program is to provide Business League members with a deeper understanding of the opportunities in Madison County in an environment that enhances their leadership skills and prepares graduates to take their knowledge and their experience into the community for the betterment of Madison County as a whole. It's my pleasure to introduce you to the inaugural class today representing a diverse group of business sector leaders in Madison County. And at this time, I'd like to ask them to stand, and I will introduce them in alphabetical order. We first have Amy Ainsworth. She's with, uh, TerraCon. Lee Bosch with, um, Bank Corps South. Kristy Daniels with Priority One Bank. Gibson Etherly with Origin Bank. Pamela Files, who's the owner of PA Files LLC. Melanie Greer, Exit Realty Legacy Group, and also a, uh, new Gluckstat zoning board member. Doug Jones, who's with the Madison County School District. Jamie Lake with Bank Plus. Shamar McDonald with Neil Schaefer. And Luke Walker with Thrash Commercial Contractors. So, we, we thank you and, um, appreciate all you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We thank you, Jan, and thank all y'all for coming.
Thank you.
I hope y'all have a little time to watch your government work.
Yes, sir, we'll see what we can do. Um, I do want to also introduce those members of the Madison County Executive Leadership Steering Committee who plan all of the programs for the class. We have Chris Roberts with Bank Plus. Grant Montgomery with Bank Corps South. We have Austin Stewart with Adams and Reese. Rochelle Thompson with the American Lung Association. And Lauren Shell is here today. She's the COO of Makita, and she, this is her program day, Economic Development Day. So, they're the, the steering committee. So, thank you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. All right, our next concerned citizen, Joy Foey. Joy, are you here? Nope, she's not here. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by self, second by Gerald. End of discussion.
Yes, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I always worry about the, uh, anything hanging on the old fence around the courthouse. So, uh, we need to make sure that it's not going to damage anything up there.
Uh, Shelton, can you make sure you get withdrew?
We will.
Kind of supervise this project?
We will.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right, any other concerned citizen? Well, let's, let's go to, uh, Mr. David Valentine here, uh, Swamp Road.
Swamp Road. Judge, I mean, not judge, Board of Supervisors, it's kind of hard swapping heads sometimes. My clients and I were not here at the last meeting when y'all abandoned the Swamp Road. We were under the impression that the meeting was going to be continued. It's my fault that it was not. I sent Don McGraw an email. He was going to get in touch with Shelton. My email had the wrong address on it agreeing to the fact that it was going to be postponed for 30 days. We are still in the process of negotiating easements on both ends. It's my understanding that the board took the action and abandoned Swamp Road last meeting from the south end all the way around through Brother Poole's property, through Joe Earl Evans' property, and through the Fayard and Huff, or Howe property and Potlatch, all the way from Putnam down to the old Swamp Road, old 51 Road. We are requesting that the board stay that proceedings until we have had an opportunity to complete the, um, easement and to complete the easement through there. Right now, the Martins, Brother Poole's property, New Place Land and Timber LLC, Buzzard Roost Holdings, nor Julian Fayard have legal access. Well, Julian does because he's got a Potlatch easement. But nobody as far as, um, the Martin property, the Buzzard Roost Holdings, or the Poole property has a finalized easement. And it's my understanding that Julian Fayard is not going to have access through Brother Huff's property either. I think Don's back there can speak to that. But, uh, that easement has not been finalized. We walked it and rode it this weekend and agreed on additional properties and additional work that had to be done on that easement before it would be, uh, available for timber to go through it. The main thing is there's no southern easement through Mr. Joe Earl Evans' property. We were under the impression from speaking with Paul Griffin at the own location. He did not commit to this, but we thought that he had committed that the south end was not going to be abandoned, which gives Brother Poole and, um, the New Place Land and Timber LLC and Buzzard Roost Holdings LLC access through that south end Potlatch and through Mr. Joe Earl Evans' property. If that is abandoned, we have to go back into negotiations with Potlatch Timber giving access through that. We have been told that Mr. Evans is not going to give us an easement, period. He told me that himself. In order to avoid litigation, uh, we were going to attempt to go through Potlatch and avoid litigation with Mr. Evans and the other landowners through there. We're real close to getting the north end, and we're working with Potlatch on the south end. But until those easements are completed and of record, we'd respectfully request that the board stay its, uh, decision to abandon that on the north and the south ends until we can come back with a written agreement. We did what the board told us to do at the last meeting, uh, and that was get to work on it hard and fast. And we've been, uh, waiting on surveyors. We got that done. Now it's a matter of improving the road. Respectfully request that y'all hold that in abeyance. Realize that y'all just approved the minutes from the last meeting, um, which abandoned that. Would ask that y'all consider holding that in abeyance until at least the next 30 days for the next board meeting. Thank you. Don, you got anything you want to say?
Don, uh, before you get started, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to Don McGraw, that, that, that easement that you were proposing for those other landowners.
Right.
Uh, is that easement giving all the property owners back there a way out?
It gives, uh, well, it runs all the way through to Andy Dice's property, Buzzard Roost, to its corner. And then the Martins have to come across, uh, a portion of property that's basically a little trail. It's not part of the easement to get to their property, but, uh...
That trail, but i- is owned by who, him?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's owned, uh, Mr. Griffin, that trail is owned partially by Mr. Dice, partially by Mr. Fayard, is what we came to an agreement on this weekend. It's going to be a 15-foot easement on the property line that goes along from where they drew their easement along Andy and, uh, Mr. Fayard's property. That has got to be added to the easement that Don, uh, is working on. They will have access across Mr. Fayard's property and across Mr. Dice's property along the property line to get to their twin. But right now, they do not.
Don, is that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Don, is that, uh, is that an, uh, an agreement that you can make happen? Yeah, I think we can make all of it happen. They just been waiting on us to finish that new road that's being built in there to their satisfaction. And I've got the documents drafted. I got to put tweak it a little bit for David, but, uh...
Had I, had I realized we had a meeting two weeks ago, I would have been here, as would my client. It's my fault. I did not follow up with Don. My email did not show rejected and returned to me through my mail or payment, and I assumed we were not being here. I was across the street in Circuit Court.
And David, you said something about Mr. Evans' property.
Mr. Evans' property is on the south end.
Right.
And y'all abandoned his portion of the property from the south end going up to Mr. Poole's property. That's Andy and Dr. Poole's tractor access to their property. We're going to have to build a whole new road on the northwest, or the southwest side of the Potlatch property to get in there. Uh, and Potlatch is going to have to give us an easement across there to get, to give Andy and the Martins an easement. We have access across that for a punning camp already, but not for Mr. Martin, nor the Martin property, nor Andy's property, or Dr. Poole's property.
Don, do you think, uh, you can make that happen? Potlatch easement? Well, I know their lawyer well. I don't mind having David with me.
I've been spoken, I have been speaking to Gogol trip with Potlatch trying to make that happen and wanted to see exactly what had been abandoned and what y'all's board, uh, what y'all's opinion was. We were fine with abandoning the north end of the property and doing the new. The south end puts a, puts a bird in everybody's saddle, except Joe Earl Evans.
Yeah, and I don't know where, where the board is, but sound like, uh, Don and his client, uh, working in good faith, uh, getting everybody a way to their property.
They are.
And rather it the best way, uh, I don't think this board is, is the one to make that decision on is giving them the best way to their property. I think the law is required that they have, uh, access to their property. And I think, uh, Don and his client is doing that. So, where I am is y'all need to work with, with Don and his client and get your easement because he working in good faith.
I agree, and we are. I'm just asking that we have access to our property till we get that done. And if y'all abandon both of those roads, nobody has access.
All right.
How they been getting back and forth because we abandoned it a couple of weeks ago?
We've been trespassing.
Okay, well, that worked for me. I mean...
Well, if, if there's a problem with one of the landowners, it can be a problem.
But it hasn't been so far.
Not so far. We haven't run into the landowner that's the major problem.
You got anything else, Don?
I don't have any. Don, I would, again, I would encourage you to continue to work with David because, uh, if I would have known last week or last board meeting that, uh, this was not, uh, finished, of course, guys, we've been working on this thing for six months. I mean, it seemed like every month, you know, something's come up and, 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 uh, y'all been working on it. So, um, I, I would encourage you to continue to work on it and get this thing done. And also, I see Mr. Evans over there for him to continue to, to work with y'all as well on his piece of property to try to make this happen because everyone has a right to their property. Everyone has a right, an easement to their property or... So, um, that, that's what I would encourage you to do as well.
Thank y'all for your time.
What can I accept, can I expect a decision from the board to hold this in abeyance? A motion to hold it in abeyance? Or y'all just leaving us on our own?
We gonna, we gonna leave it like it is right now. I'm not going to put that in motion.
I, I, well, I'll tell you this, it's fixing to start litigation. There will be litigation and between the landowners if we do not have access to that property. And I'm trying to avoid that in everybody's best interest if we can.
Ms. Griffin, I would, I would ask our attorney, with that being said, and decision we made two weeks ago, with the understanding there's properties that does not have an easement or right of way to them, where does that leave this board with the decision we made two weeks ago?
Keep in mind that we had a public hearing and they didn't show up.
I was here. So, because litigation depends on the parties.
I understand. I'm not threatening to sue the board again.
Yes, sir. He asked me a question, I'm trying to answer. Depends on who the parties would be to litigation, of course, it's the two other parties in dispute.
Mike, if you would, please speak in the microphone.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
This issue has been protracted ongoing every two weeks, every two weeks, every two weeks. So, here we are. The attorney just talked about perhaps litigation. So, if you ask me a question, what does the board stand? I'd have to ask him. If he's going to be the, uh, one implementing the litigation, who would be the parties? Because there are two parties in contention. The board may not necessarily be a party. So, he may not include you, which means you don't have to do anything. Now, uh, if we're sued, um, based on the bill of exceptions, which would be 10 days after you've made a decision, I'd question the timing, first of all. But if it's proper timing, then, you know, anybody could sue this county if they feel aggrieved. Uh, and they may feel aggrieved about what you did a couple of weeks ago. So, it depend on, uh, whether the Circuit Court of Madison County determine if, if your ruling was justified. And there's standards for that, you know? So, as long as it wasn't arbitrary or capricious, you know? Uh, I think we do pretty well, uh, in a lawsuit like that, but it hasn't been filed. So, I think that what you did, you had a hearing. You, I think you had two hearings, actually. You're from both sides, everything's on the record, uh, and you made a decision. So, I think your decision was not arbitrary, it was not capricious. It was in the public interest of Madison County. I think we do all right. Depends on whether there's a suit and whether who's named.
All right. Another question, other board member?
Well, uh, he, he just said the board wasn't going to be a party, didn't he?
I don't anticipate the board being a party at this point. If they are, they'll be a party within 10 days from today, once the date the board minutes were approved. And the board was just approved 10 minutes ago. And I put a request in that this be set aside where, the day we found, uh, out that there had actually been a meeting. Nobody called us, nobody told us there was a meeting. We found out after the fact. Frankly, it's not Mr. Shelton's fault, but I would have thought that somebody would have told us that we were still having a meeting. I was under the impression, as were my clients, that that had been continued.
Who gave you that impression?
Don, and I had a conversation, he had a conversation with Shelton Vance, as put in my letter, that if we had something from both of us in writing, that it would be continued. I sent it in writing, it was not received. That's my fault because of mistake. It's an honest mistake. Uh, if it is neglect, it was excusable neglect. And I don't think that the parties to this road and the people using this road should be, um, held not being able to have access to their property when the board had said all along, if there's not an agreement by the parties, we're not going to abandon. There was no agreement by the parties. Why that was not said to the board two weeks ago, I don't know. Had I been here, I would have said it isn't there. And there was no agreement. There is no written agreement. And if Don represented that there was an agreement, I think y'all misunderstood him. He said there was probably one in the works. Nobody has ever signed an agreement, and we only got a written agreement in semifinal format after the last meeting. And that was the board's instruction, was to give those parties who want the road abandoned to give us a written agreement. We've been working on that, but we didn't get it until after the board meeting two weeks ago. That's where we are. And I would again...
Are we all there? Can you make a statement about what was just said, so we have on the record?
Yeah.
What do you want to know?
Do you agree with what he just said?
I agree that we were set, we had talked about continuing the hearing. But, uh, David was to email me a request, and I told him I'd kind, I'd send it on to Shelton. I talked to Shelton by phone that day to tell him, or it's like on a Tuesday, to tell him that I'd be sending him an email to continue the hearing. So, it comes along there about, uh, time for the agenda to go out on Thursday. And I tried calling David, didn't get him. So, I called Shelton, I said, I guess David decided not to put his continuance request on the agenda. So, I said, go ahead and put the road back on there. So, that's what happened.
And I was not aware that it was back on there.
All right.
But Don, again, I, I want to ask this question again because, man, we've been through this, like I said, six months. And, and I'm going to put it back on your two shoulders because it's been going on way too long. And, but I understand that your clients is willing to do what it takes to have an easement to every piece of property owner. Is that what I understand you say? Because else I would not have supported that motion last board meeting because everyone has a right to the easement to that piece of property. Yeah, yeah, they're trying to accommodate everybody who has to come.
And, and having the right to their... No, whether it's the north end, west end, if you coming in on the east end, you, they got access to their property.
Yet somewhere. Mr. Evans, you on board with working with the two attorneys for your piece of property?
I understood what you said.
They are looking for an easement for... ...property.
No.
All right, if that's the case... Will not be abandoned at this time, if it passes.
Yeah, but he, here's the question is, I think they going, they can have a way to their property...
They got a way.
Without going through Mr. Evans' property.
They got a way. There's a way right here, I tell you. They comes on it...
You got a 30-foot road.
That's right. Now, they leave from my property, go right up the hill. This is how they do it. Make a left on Buell Road and come on back down to their property. They don't have to come through me. It's just the idea that they want to do that.
And Don's client is...
The idea right there, and the other stand up down the door. Y'all want my property, but I'm not going to give you no ease or nothing.
Talk to us, talk to us.
I got it.
I'm letting you know, letting the lawyer know.
Talk to us, Joe.
If you get it, you gonna pay. I mean, debt, if you believe in him here.
Thank you. All right.
Which is the problem we're trying to get over.
Y'all work together, guys.
That's where we're going to leave it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right. All right, moving right along, uh...
Consent items.
Yep, on down to consent. I entertain a motion on consent. Move. Got a motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Trey. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right, next thing, I want to call our lawyer up and let him give some discussion about marijuana before we get into Ms. Jones and Mr. Steen's request here.
Well, good morning, board, and good morning, audience. Mayor, good morning. There are two items on the agenda, supervisors, item 43 and item 44. They're both similar. Uh, under Supervisor Jones, uh, item 43 says Mississippi Medical Cannabis Law. And under Supervisor Steen, item 44 says, "Consideration of vote to opt out of allowance of medis, of medical cannabis dispensary." That's what the agenda says. So, knowing, seeing, seeing these, uh, I wanted a bit of time, and I won't be long, to come to this board this morning to get ahead of these motions, to discuss with you my legal opinion concerning both of these items on the agenda today. I don't know what you will do. I don't know what you won't do, what, what, what you will do. Uh, maybe you won't do anything. But at least, uh, it's my job to put this board in the best legal position possible, knowing that the future is uncertain regarding litigation, this law. This is a new law passed by municipal legislature in the recent term. This particular law says, uh, that the local governing authorities, including the board of supervisors, you got 90 days to opt out of this law. As you alre- already know, uh, if, um, if you don't specifically opt out of collection, growing, processing, uh, dispensing, then you automatically opt in. We know that if you, uh, opt, uh, opt out, you could al- always opt in. But if you opt in, you could not opt out. We know that.
All right.
And the deadline nowadays is tomorrow, May 3rd. That's it. Uh, so, seeing these two items on the agenda, I looked at the law. I talked to other lawyers, uh, who've already opted out, and some have opted in. I've talked to both of them. You may or may not do it today. So, if you look at item, this is a, it's a 160-page law. But I've, I've cored through it, and I picked out two paragraphs that I think are relevant for what you may or may not do today. Look at line 2161, Senate Bill number 2095, page 85. I want to read it. It says, "The governing authorities of the municipality or the board of supervisors of the county," that's you, "shall provide a notice in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, section 2541-1, of its intent of holding a vote regarding opting out of allowing the cultivation, processing, sale, and or distribution of medical cannabis and cannabis products as applicable." Look at, I, look at line 2169. It says that the board of supervisors may opt out of allowing one or more of the following: cultivation, processing, sale, or distribution of medical cannabis and cannabis products under vote. It is going to be on the minute. So, uh, to me, there's two items on the agenda. The first one talks about discussion of the medical cannabis law. discussion of the medical cannabis law. The other one is a great deal more specific. The, the second one talks about a motion, an intent for a motion to opt out of the Medicus Cannabis Act with specific regard to dispensaries. All right. Not knowing what's gonna happen. I think that the first motion is legitimate, would be legitimate, but the first discussion, the first item on the agenda, would be legitimate insofar as discussion of the medical cannabis law. I think if there would be a motion as a result of a discussion on this item, to opt out of all of it or any of it, I think that motion would be improper. Why? Because the law is pretty specific. When it talks about giving the public notice of your intention to opt out of all of it, cultivation, process, and dispensary, or any of it. And as I read what's, the, the, the notice on the agenda that was given to the public on your agenda, it's good for a discussion. And there could be a discussion. You know, we've talked about zoning laws, capability of the unincorporated areas to absorb this. I've heard talk about a moratorium. So you could discuss any of that, 'cause that's what you told the public you would do. But if anyone intends to move to opt out of any of this as a result of that item, in my opinion, I think that would be improper. And anyone who would feel aggrieved, who might want you to opt in, would, would, to me, have legitimate grounds to be aggrieved, and ten days from hence, when the minutes come out, could sue this county for that. And it's my job to alert you to that. And I'm doing my best for that. The second item is specific. It talks about the maker of the item on the agenda, intent to vote, to opt out of Medical Cannabis Act as regarding dispensaries. That is specific. To me, that qualifies fully with the intent of legislature in, in informing the public on the Open Meetings Act, what you intend to do. Now, I would much rather have preferred this board to have acted earlier, you know? I mean, the deadline is tomorrow. We could've noticed the hearing, you know, like you do with, with, with roads. You know, where you, five days notice, boom, you have a hearing, hear from both sides, and that's it. That wasn't done. That could be a special call meeting. You know, that wasn't done. So here we are, the day before the deadline, trying to do this. And so, and if we do nothing, of course, you opt in. And you could never opt out. If you opt out, you can opt in. So I wanted to give you the benefit of my thoughts as legal counsel on what's proper, what's not proper. And so to me, you, it's certainly proper to discuss this, and that would be the item, the first item. Of course, you can. But if there's a motion to opt out, on that discussion, I think that's improper. The second one is proper, 'cause it's specific. And then what Robert Rules of Order will allow you to do on any motion is another idea. Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, is the county, this probably better pertain for, for Andy to answer, is the county properly set up for zoning for these facilities? And do we need a medical corridor? Or is it gonna be the Wild West up here, or what?
Yeah, and, and maybe Scott may wanna chime in, too. We, we have had some discussions. Obviously, we knew this was coming. I mean, it's all over the headlines. We have had some discussions, and when I say discussions, I mean Scott, myself, and CNPD regarding changes to our ordinance. Not, not in the matter of zoning it out, or zoning around it, or, you know, special exceptions, or anything like that. But we have not made or proposed any changes in our ordinance, haven't, haven't given public hearing of any notice of changes or whatever. So to answer your question, what, our, our ordinance is what it is now. So in the event that, you know, you, you don't opt out, I guess any potential applicants would be subject to the zoning regulations now. I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly how the law, the medical marijuana law, and our current zoning ordinance mesh, because we just haven't, we haven't done it, haven't been asked to. So, I mean, if- Scott, have you got anything to add to that, or is that, you agree with that pretty much?
So you don't know if we have the proper controls in place to, to regulate this?
I don't, I don't know what the proper controls would be, but whatever we have in place now would be the only controlling authority that we have, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And I had a more question, a more, Sheila, I'll fill over to you.
Okay, well, I think that after hearing the discussion, I put this item on the agenda because I didn't know it was gonna go, anyone else was. So I'm gonna withdraw my item number forty-three, because I do think that Mr. Steen's done a better good, a better job of outlining the, more specifically, what our goals are trying to accomplish, or what we're trying to accomplish here, which is control some of this, if at all possible. So that being the case, I'd like to withdraw item forty-three.
All right. Yeah, we're gonna move right on to Mr. Steen.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. President. Talking about the medical marijuana, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of information that may have, may not have been correct. So been looking at this last couple of three weeks, actually, and appreciate the help that I've received from other people. But primarily, our comptroller, Shelton, I've asked him to put together a couple of things as well, to discuss, or to go over with this board, what options do we really have? What does each category actually mean, that we have the option to, not necessarily opt out, but to discuss today? And I also asked our Planning and Zoning Director to put a map together as well, and kinda show us some of the things that Supervisor Baxter was talking about as far as the zoning, where some of this stuff could possibly go. So Shelton, if you would, do you mind bringing, bringing some information out and going over with us a little about what each category means?
Okay, your attorney made reference to his reading, and I'm sure he's had fun, because just for example, this, this is double-sided, this is the medical cannabis law. So there's some four hundred and forty-five pages in this law. That's a lot. Okay, I'm gonna pass out-
That's ridiculous.
Yes.
I'm gonna pass out a couple of definitions for you. And these items that I have highlighted here should match the items on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's an overall concept in this law, something called a cannabis establishment. And an establishment is made up, according to the law, of seven different items. Those seven different items are cultivation facilities, processing facilities, testing facilities, dispensary, transportation facility, disposal entity, and research facility. Each of those are defined in the information that I just gave to you. So do you want me to run over the definition of each one of them?
Yes, if, if you would, explain what each means, if, if they're built in the county, or if we do not opt out of them.
Okay, the first item is a cultivation facility. It is a business licensed by the Department of Health that acquires, grows, cultivates, and harvests federal cannabis in an indoor, enclosed, locked, and secure facility.
Okay.
Okay. The next item, a processing facility, is a business that is licensed by the Department of Health that acquires or intends to acquire cannabis from a cultivation facility, and it processes the intent, processes the cannabis with the intent to manufacture a cannabis product. It manufactures or intends to manufacture a cannabis product from unprocessed cannabis, and then sell or intends to sell cannabis product to a dispensary. Right? A testing facility is an independent licensed entity registered with the Department of Health that analyzes the safety and potency of cannabis. A dispensary is an entity licensed by the Mississippi Department of Revenue that acquires, possesses, stores, transfers, sells, supplies, or dispenses medical cannabis equipment used for medical cannabis, or related supplies and educational materials to car haulers. So basically, this is your storefront.
That's the sale of it.
That would be the second. The transportation facility is an independent entity licensed with the Department of Health that is involved in the commercial transportation of cannabis. The disposal entity, reading the law, is a business licensed by the Department of Health that is involved in the commercial disposal or destruction of cannabis. And then the research facility, one more of the, in the definition of establishment, and this one's kinda long, is a research facility at a university or college, or an independent entity licensed by the Department of Health that acquires cannabis from cultivation facilities and processing facilities in order to research cannabis for best practices, develop medicines, and commercial antibiotics for medical use. Okay, so those are the definitions of the seven items that fall under an establishment.
Okay, thanks, Shelton. Scott, do you mind bringing the map up that, that you had prepared to, and, and explain what zone, and where that zone is approximately located to the, to the board, as far as what could happen in certain areas?
Everything you see in the green is agricultural, all over the county, basically, that can be your cultivation, processing facility.
And that's the way it is zoned today?
That's correct.
Okay.
Your industrial, everything's in gray.
Uh-huh.
But over here in Turner Park, magazi, this is an east side right here. Have a little bit of technical industrial park right up in here, and-
Test.
Right up in here.
And that would go under testing, or still under-
All of those would be cultivation and processing.
Okay.
Your commercial districts, that right here, it links to Vernon Road, and Highway twenty-two, come down here, go up to that, right around Old Jackson Road, right down on Parkway East, or about that. And we have some on fifty-one, right over here, where this crossroad is the media equipment.
Right.
Some up in there. Got a little bit of it, Farm Haven, and sixteen, right here, sixteen to the east. Oh, there's a small portion up here in Camden, right here, Sharon, and sixteen west, and fifty-five. That's, that's the majority of your six to the area.
And C T, C two would fit under the testing facility and the dispensary?
And research, and research.
Okay.
Testing, research, and what was the other one?
Dispensary.
Dispensary.
Okay. And the transportation disposal would fit under-
It's not specifically referenced in the law, so that would fall outside of the law and go in our regular zoning consideration. That would fall under industrial. Yes, commercial for the transportation or for the industrial. Disposal would be completely industrial.
Okay. And, and what's on the agenda the day that, that I asked for it to be on there was the distribution, the dispensary with that. And again, show us on the map where that possibly could be, if we did not opt out.
Little bit right here on sixteen, the county line.
Right.
Sixteen and Farm Haven.
Right.
A little small portion up here in Camden. Sixteen west, fifty-five, Vernon, and maybe some small little portions up here in Turner Park, and another county spread, or spread out, Parkway East down here by the City of Madison and Clubstown. Highway fifty-one, of the east side of the county, other portions across the south road, Old Jackson Road and-
Nissan Drive.
Nissan Drive. Right out here at Highway forty-three, out there by the reservoir, right there around Landloaves. One thing that we didn't say is a lot of these that are spread out remotely are small parcels, and they're occupied.
Right.
Any of them already occupied.
Okay.
Those are all outside the city limits, so, yeah.
So the city limits, you know, everything is just flooded.
Yeah, well, the cities has taken care of theirs every which way.
Parkway East, and it's part of it at least, inside-
Uh, some of it's in the city, and some of it's in Clubstown. I think those, the small portions that we still have- Everything that we're discussing would be unincorporated.
Yeah.
Dispensers are sovereign entities, they make their own decisions. Everything we're talking about would be-
Unincorporated.
-incorporated cannabis here.
Okay. Are, are there any other questions for Shelton or Scott?
Paul, I got a question for Minor, if he's around. I thought I saw him out in the hallway.
Minor, you outside? Come in.
Minor, we're probably not gonna be able to see you behind that board. You might wanna move it out of the way. It's my understanding, these things generate a lot of heat, there's a lot of electricity. What, what are we doing as far as fire preparation for the grow facilities?
I hadn't had any of that brought to my office on anything like that. But any size building that's gonna be, to that size where they can grow it, is gonna be required by law to have a sprinkler system installed.
Okay. Is there anything extra we need, as far as equipment, the county needs to help combat fires? How big are these, do you have any idea how big these facilities are gonna be, these grow facilities?
No, I haven't seen any plans on it. But if you sprinkle a system, that makes it a lot, a building that makes it a lot easier on doing fire protection.
Okay.
But, but all of that is, will, will happen if someone comes to us-
Right.
-to build a building. I mean, you have certain guidelines you have to follow.
Right, and we don't see that till they bring it. But they must meet all the fire guidelines-
That's right.
...on the size of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Don't, don't, don't run off of that map, Shelton.
Can I say something to the attorney real quick?
Yeah, say something to the attorney. Turn it back around this way.
Okay.
And, and now you might need to turn, turn it to the, where the cameras can see you. All that green and that dark gray area, that outside of the city limits is mostly in Supervisory District Four and Supervisory District Five. Uh, the cities have already chose to opt out, and that's fine. All except I think the city of Canton. So the decision that we'll be making, uh, opting out or staying in, mostly affect District Four and District Five. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Looking at this, you know, the, of course, the state did what they, what they did this past session and then, you know, put the marijuana bill out there. But also, the people voted on this, and in Madison County, the vote was sixty percent for, thirty-four percent against. You know, that's, they are the ones that made the decision to, you know, as far as the marijuana. So with that being said, each district, each district, all five, was in favor of this marijuana bill. Each district was. District One was approximately sixty-one percent in favor, thirty-five against. District Two, approximately fifty-four percent in favor, forty-one percent against. District Three, fifty-nine percent in favor, thirty-six against. District Four, sixty-one in favor, thirty percent against. District Five, sixty-eight percent in favor, twenty-three percent against. These are approximately numbers for each district because they are split districts or split precincts. So those numbers could sway one way or the other, you know, by one percent. But Madison County overwhelmingly supported this action. And so with that being said, I went and talked with law enforcement, some other leaders in the county, and the biggest concern that I heard was the dispensary distribution of it at this point. Whether the legislature will go back and revisit that next year, don't know. But that was the, by far, the largest concern when I talked with people that was in law enforcement, plus other leaders, you know, in the county. So that's the reason that I specifically put my motion the way I did with opting out or possibly opting out of the medical cannabis dispensary. And so, Ms. President, at this point, I would like to make a motion to opt out of the dispensary sale here in Madison County.
Okay, there's a motion by Gerald. Is there a second?
Go ahead. Yeah, you can say it.
I'll second it for discussion purposes. Has the Health Department, I know they're in charge of regulating this, have they finalized exactly how they're going to manage the medical marijuana inside the state? I mean, I know that the law's passed, the statutes are passed, but just, when I mean that...
I would have to go through this four hundred and forty-five pages. My recollection is they have a hundred and twenty days in which to finalize their regulations. They have been presented for public comment, but my understanding is they have not been finalized at this point.
Okay.
Oh, that dispensary part. Now, you got to understand that before an individual get this marijuana, they're going to have to have a prescription from a medical MD. And only where I know right now to get a prescription filled is at a drugstore. I don't think there's no one on the corner selling the medication that I take. If there is, the sheriff going to be trying to get them pretty quickly, pretty fast. And that's the same way on this marijuana. It going to have to be sold at a licensed area. So it ain't like we, the county, going, or the cities, going to allow them to set up shop somewhere and sell marijuana, and they not licensed by the state of Mississippi or even the federal government to sell this. Uh, the state then passed the law. The people voted for it, and it been modified several times.
It's even narrower than that. In order to get your license or your card, you got to go to a doctor, a licensed doctor, and he's got to determine if you have a specific medical ailment. That's not in the law. It's not just go to the doctor and get it. You got to have, you got to have the illness that the Medical Cannabis Act is, has been passed to help alleviate the suffering of the illness. So you got to have, you got to have some illnesses, not just anything that I've specific.
And?
So the illnesses that you said are already very specific in the law?
I think that you're correct on that part, but I think that's where the concern is at this, at this point, that people not sure where all it could be sold. And so that's the reason that I narrowed it down to directly to the dispensary until, until DHS or whatever other agency that's involved will definitely narrow it down to where this is, this is where it's going to be sold. And we can always opt back in if we choose to.
What's timeline on that opting in? Anytime?
I think it's anytime.
It's it. It's it. Opt out, you can opt in. I don't think that's a deadline.
If you opt in, you can't opt out. If you opt in, you can't opt out.
Opt in, you can't opt out. Opt out, you can opt in.
Well, you know, my concern is, as I was hearing that we were going to have discussions, my concern has always been to make sure that the will of the people would be what I was going to be voting for. Madison County overwhelmingly voted for a proposition, I think sixty-five what it was, which was the legalization of the medical marijuana. I know that there are a lot of people and a lot of different illnesses that, that the cannabis can't help. Now, I was even told, I have a son who passed away from seizures, and then I saw, read something where he possibly could have been helped also. Uh, because we had taken several different medications and never was able to control his seizures. But anyway, I am interested in making sure that the will of the people of Madison County is represented on this board and we vote accordingly to those, the will of those people. I also think that, you know, I've had conversations or emails with people that are really coming, I mean, they're coming all bouncing off the wall with all kinds of crazy stuff that the law does not provide for. And it's causing certain emotions in people that they shouldn't, you know, they shouldn't read into the law something that isn't there. But now, as a governing body, I also understand that there are other considerations. And we're talking about dispensaries. As we talk about dispensaries, and we're talking about outside of municipalities. So we're talking about dispensaries in the countryside. So now it takes my mind to only one thing, public safety. Because I know that it would put a burden on our sheriff's department to maintain security, even though anybody in their right mind is just going to be in the business of dispensing cannabis. It's going to have their own private security. But I don't know if the law even requires it, so we have to make sure that security is always available. We have a very safe county now. And as you continue to add layers of things into our county, we always have to add more and more security. So that's, that, that's the only thing that will probably govern my, my vote. In this motion is my concern for the public, public safety as it applies to the locations of where we're talking about. We are, we are talking about outside of municipalities, okay?
Ms. Banks, you're, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ms. Banks, you know, you're correct. If you look at those seven items on that board, all of them but one is either a vehicle or a building, which is very much under control. The only item that is really in question is the distribution, dispensary, which is not sure, not sure where you can, not sure what protection, as you indicated a few minutes ago, Supervisor Banks, that we have. And that's the reason that the concern, when I talked with the different leaders, that they had, is to look at it and see later on if that portion may be changed next year to a degree by the legislature. It may, it may not be, but right now it's the, it's the unknown out of those seven that really concerns me more than anything else that's up there. And so that's the reason my motion specifically mentioned the distribution of the dispensary, of the sale.
All right, one more thing, I'm going to just add to it, and then I call the vote. I think I heard Gerald call out the percentage of each district on how they voted in favor for marijuana. Only one that stuck in my mind was District Five, and they voted sixty-eight percent for it. So talking about the will of the people, Carl.
Yeah.
Sixty-eight percent, I'd take that every, any, any election day, so. All right, we got a motion by Gerald, second by Trey.
I think the sheriff wants to say something.
Sheriff, come on.
Would you mind?
Come on right on up.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess.
And I, and I don't want to offend anyone. This is just my opinion, which is probably not worth a whole lot in, in most areas. And I do agree with you on the will of the people being, being served. But I, I do want to point out, this, this was a state bill. This is not a Madison County bill. This is not a City of Madison bill. This is a state bill for the state of Mississippi, the people of Mississippi. So when they voted on this bill, it was for the state. It wasn't specifically for Madison County. And I think the will of the people have been served in the passage of the bill. Medical marijuana is allowed under the bill. I don't think there's any doubt about that. What concerns me is the dispensary portion of the bill and how it's going to be regulated. And it's going to be overseen by the same people that were going to oversee the mask mandates. And two years later, we see how that worked out. They still couldn't mandate a mask out of a garbage can or tell who was wearing one where. There's been no communication between the Department of Health and local law enforcement as far as overseeing or offering a plan of attack of how we're going to regulate or enforce these laws. There's no, there's no agenda for it. You know, there's a call that this will be reviewed at the next session, which is a year from now or the year after, to amend or, or basically review what's happened in the previous twelve months to see how it's going, so to speak. I would point out that Madison County has a very small, unincorporated area that is suitable under their current zoning for dispensaries. And as pointed out, I think those areas are mostly consumed with current occupation. So I think that would, that would mitigate the dispensaries there. I don't know if there's going to be any change to the, to the bill in that session. I don't know if there's going to be any change at all, but in my opinion, the greatest area of change would be in those dispensary areas and what's allowed and the regulation and the number of dispensaries, which by the way is un, there's no ceiling. There could be thousands and thousands, thousands of them. And just speaking from the law enforcement side of it, I've spoke with numerous agencies across the country who have implicated or implemented this program. And I won't get into the horror stories of it about the crime that comes with it, not necessarily the marijuana, but the collateral damage from it. But I, I just think it's good business for us to, to see what's going to happen when we don't necessarily have the zoning area in the county. The, the regulation over that, the ceiling on the number of dispensaries, the, just the attrition we're going to have in law enforcement trying to regulate this. I think Supervisor Banks brought up a great point. It's, it's going to be tough on us out in the far reaches where these areas are. I want to make it very clear. I'm for opting out of everything. I've made that clear from day one, but I understand the need or the desire to opt in in certain parts of it, the industrial part or the, or the commercial part. I don't think that's going to be a lot of change in that, but I do certainly think there's going to be some change in the amounts and the dispensary numbers and things of that nature. And I just think it's good, good policy to create an environment where you don't necessarily dive in on the front end and see what the, what the numbers are going to show at the, at the back end. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
I'm going to do something a little different here. We got a motion and a second. I'm going to allow anyone out here in the ordinary, if they want, have two minutes to speak before I call for the vote. They're welcome to come to the mic. Good to see you, Mayor.
Good to see y'all, and thank you for everything, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just, this is a troublesome decision in a lot of ways. When we talk about putting something new in place and crossing into an area that we know nothing about, I did that with zoning and building the City of Madison. And I looked out and reached out at other places that had been there and how long it took them to get there, to build their communities, and what they did great and what they wished they hadn't done. Looking at what's happening in this journey with marijuana, it's been no different. We reached out to, to Oklahoma. They have a track record, Sheriff, and it's not a good one. I spoke with the director of the Alabama Cannabis Association to see what they were doing. There is truly a medical marijuana program. It's by a doctor. It's by a doctor with a pill or capsule. It's not combustible. And it's troubling to know that this is something that can impact the lives of our children at big time. This is probably one of the biggest decisions that we'll make in Mississippi and this, and this county. The bill is four hundred and forty-one pages long, and it's hard to interpret. Sometimes you regret counseling. But, you know, right now, we have the opportunity to just opt out. And let's see, and let's, let's evaluate where we are and the impact it's going to make on our quality of life. If we could do that and then create our own plan for the county and assess it, it's not a, a do or die right now. It's do or die if we jump into something we can't get out of. And I'd just like to ask you all to please consider that. Because Madison is not quick to jump in our zoning. And we've been through a lot of fights and a lot of lawsuits. But we're proud of our community, and we're proud of this county. And whatever you do is gonna affect our cities. And we ask for you to please have, have a little grace about that and think about it a little longer. Give us a little grace period in that. And thank you, Sheriff, for what you do. We appreciate you very much, and you all too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, all right. Gerald, you wanna get that vote, that, uh, motion again?
Mr. Lot, read that motion.
Motion I have is consideration the vote to opt out of the allowance of medical cannabis dispensaries in the county of Madison.
All right.
Correct.
Motion by Gerald, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
No.
That'd be two of them.
Supervisor Griffin. What was the vote?
Three to two.
Three to two.
Uh, I'm voting with, uh, the people choice.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta vote with.
That's sixty-eight percent, kind of.
Yeah, it's kinda overwhelming.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
First then.
Yes. All right, move it right along. Shelton, you gonna step in for Keisha.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Supervisors, you may remember that a couple of meetings ago, we accepted proposals that led to a reverse auction related to a single axle dump truck. There was, in the end, one successful proposal. I would ask that you acknowledge the bid received from Tri-State Truck and award the lowest and best bid to Tri-State Truck for one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
Make a motion.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl.
Yep.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Let's go, Tim, you up.
All right, I'll make this brief. Uh, first item I have is, it is ERBR application time again. We'd like to submit, uh, applications for two bridges on North Old Canton and two bridges on Yandle Road for consideration from the state.
Motion.
Second by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item is the final plat of Lake, of Catherine Lake of Caroline. Uh, this is an inf, a development that has no public infrastructure associated with it.
Motion.
Motion by?
Second.
Trey, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item is request for authorization to advertise for the Hindle Road Bridge Replacement State Aid Project.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item is the same thing for Mount Pilgrim Road Bridge Replacement.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, and next item is authorization to advertise for the Southwood Drive Street repairs.
Where is that?
That is in, oh, gosh, Harvey Crossing.
Okay.
All right, all right. Motion.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed? Motion carried. Carry right on.
My item I have is, as I mentioned, I guess a month ago, we lost our motor grader driver. So we're requesting a temporary position from Melvin Stevenson to operate our motor grader until we're able to find a permanent employee.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Tim, how's that striping project coming on Cedar Hill?
It is advertising right now.
Tim, do you need to do any advertising, whatever? Cause, um, this motor grader deal, because we short of two motor graders.
We are.
Uh, if we can't find a skilled one, buy one and train them. Cause, no, I got them all on dirt roads. I might be the only one yapping and yelling.
I know, he, you, you've got a legitimate.
But we need a motor grader driver, cause.
Oh, take your time, Tim. That's all.
That's easy for you to say. You don't get his phone calls.
I'm a worm to death.
That's right.
Cause you getting caught without a motor grader driver? That makes you know that you need two of them.
I agree.
Yo.
Especially, it's not good to lose one this time of the year, for sure.
You're right, definitely. That's my motion.
Yeah, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you get it, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Tim, who's doing the work on, is that, is Hoy Road a city project?
That's a city of Madison project. I believe it's Hemp Hill Construction doing the actual work.
They finally look like they're moving.
All right, where we at?
Uh, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning. Uh, the first item I have, number fifty-two, is the draft minutes for the planning and zoning. Uh, I've provided a copy to Mr. Lot.
Move. Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, next item I have, item fifty-three, Alexis Olive. This is to replace a mobile home in a residential district due to a fire. One twenty-five Bo Murphy Road, Supervisor District Five.
Uh, motion.
Second.
Uh, the motion by myself, uh, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One question before you go further, where Bo Murphy Road?
Uh, it's off of, uh, North Old Canton Road. It's right around McDou, McDougal, I believe.
I, I got it. Yo, move right along there.
All right, number fifty-four, Tex Farms. This is a conditional use for an exempt mining op, I mean, excuse me, that's not an exempt mining operation, my bad. Uh, Highway forty-three, property zoned A1, Supervisor District Five. It was approved by the Planning Commission, four fourteen of twenty twenty-two. Now, this is an, an extension to a exempt mining operation. I'm sorry for that incorrect thing I put there. Uh, I think it's about thirty acres they're adding to it, but it was approved by the Planning Commission.
Motion. Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Move it right along.
Uh, number fifty-five, this is Robert Stockit III. And this amend the master development plan for north shore of Lake Caroline. It's Highway twenty-two, uh, it's property zoned PUD, Supervisor District Four. It was approved by the Planning Commission on four fourteen of twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Carl. Question nearby, uh, lawyer.
I just, I just wanna make a comment here on this that came up after our meeting. Uh, and I think it was very, very clear in our meeting to amend this master development plan. Obviously, they first submitted a petition, uh, that included fifty-four acres. But in the presentation and as discussions sometimes go, uh, there was some talk of what that master development plan included. Lots, some townhouses. And there may have been some, some statements made to make someone think that the townhouses were going away in amending this master development plan. And, and I don't think that that was intentional or, uh, it was just came up in conversation. Uh, but that's not the case. There is a specific legal description of the fifty-four acres that is coming out of the PUD and that some other action will take. I've made our minutes very clear on that. But I wanted your minutes to be clear on that as well. Because, as you know, sometimes ten, fifteen years down the road, somebody goes back looking through minutes and something's not clear or there's a question or somebody thought it was a different way. So I just wanna make abundantly clear that that's what's happening here.
All right, thanks. Uh, Carl made the motion, Trey seconded it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Oh, the next part of this, after that, uh, master development plan, was the rezoning from R one B to A one. It's on that property, uh, same property as before, since Supervisor District Four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Now, we get down to the purpose of this. It's a conditional use for a stable equestrian center riding academy. Uh, I do have Kevin Watson here. I do have the owner, Mr. News. If you would like for them to talk about their project that they propose.
Supervisor District Two.
I'll already talk to him.
All right.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, next item, Tom Mills, the variance on side setbacks in Slot seventy-nine, Shore's Caroline, Phase Two B. It's at Harper's Way, property zoned PUD. Supervisor District Two. It was approved by the Planning Commission on four fourteen, twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, last item is a Makita spec building. This is the site plan for a new building. It's on the Madison County mega site, property zoned I two industrial, Supervisor District Four.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, that's all I have.
Hey, Scott.
Paul, I got a couple of questions for Mike. No, not Scott, Mike. Um, this is, pertains to road mowing in Glugstat. Um, I wanted to make sure we're okay to, to get going with the MOU we have in place to help them out a little bit with their mowing on the sides of the roads and right of way.
Yes, sir, I believe it does. Uh, months and months ago, the county entered into an agreement with the new city of Glugstat to maintain the roads. You signed it, they signed it, and I, in my judgment, that includes mowing the right of way. So that includes it. I believe the administrator agrees with me that it's already included. So I think that if any of you wanna direct the road manager to do it, I believe that, that's, that's proper, cause you've already done it. It's already in the agreement.
Cornelius around here?
I, I think he's already begun his, uh, efforts to mow, so this would wind up on his schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
I've already seen him.
I want, you gotta make sure you, you tell the city of Glugstat they are being maintained by the county. And our mowing is not at all in that city.
Okay, okay.
And that, that agreement also talks about some form of compensation for cattle.
What part are we talking about, actually mowing?
Hopefully the same portion we were just mowing.
Mowing, the same portion we've been mowing the whole time.
But that's, that's what I was asking. Because the way you put it, you didn't really clarify. But I just wanna make sure that it's what we've been doing.
Cornelius, you got that? You good to go? Okay, man, I appreciate it.
Uh, I, don't let them jump line, though. That shit up in my area. Ain't no jumping line. All right, thanks.
Uh, one more question. Sheriff, uh, it's my understanding you've been talking to Wendell and Glugstat, maybe we had a few old cars we could give them to help them get going? Um, is there a number that you, I believe you may have ten or twenty, but I, I was in the frame of mind of maybe giving them four or declaring surplus on four and then going through the proper process to getting them some cars.
We're in the process of replacing, uh, about twenty-four, I think, actually. But, uh, as I explained to him, that was a process he needed to go through the board. I think y'all acknowledged the letter, uh,
Okay.
from Glugstat. Uh, obviously, we're replacing the, the more, uh, the ones in poor shape first. Uh, I told him I didn't think that would be in their interest to use those vehicles cause some will require significant maintenance. And he may wanna wait until we had some of the, the better equipped or better shaped vehicles. Uh, and he agreed. But that's, that's up to y'all. I mean, when I get to that point, I'll be glad to if that's what y'all decide to do.
So you think we're premature, premature to go on and make the motion, or what?
I think you could go ahead and do it. Uh, and then when I get to them, I, to that point, I'll be glad to, to let you know. But, uh, I, I think you could go ahead and do it.
Okay, well, that'll be my motion to clear, I guess, whatever Mike believes the, the best, best motion to be made to make this as efficient as possible is what I'll do.
So this board has been helping Glugstat to set up this city. And, uh, we've been doing it in a number of areas, and it's proper to do it here. Uh, they've, uh, there's first setting up their safety sector, and they need vehicles. So I think that, um, it's proper that this board would declare, if you say four, declare four vehicles as surplus and allow the administrator and I to, uh, talk with the mayor and the others to talk about, uh, some form of value. You know, that Glugstat would compensate the city. It doesn't have to be monetary value. It could be some sort of a services component. Cause there have been new AG's opinions out where we can't, you could declare them surplus, but, uh, and you could discount them. But whether we could do it for zero dollars and no service reimbursement is difficult. So there's gotta be something coming back to the county in some form where we can avoid this donation issue. So we could do this, we can declare them surplus. Uh, and if you allow us to talk with the mayor of Glugstat to his satisfaction, our satisfaction, we're getting something back from the new city. Uh, like, for instance, in every other thing we've done, whether it's fixing potholes or mowing the grass or whatever it is, it's been three MOUs. They've always agreed to reimburse us or pay us something. So this would be sort of the same, but even more lenient.
Okay, so what, what do you think the motion needs to be to make this go through is?
Motion to declare the number of cars that the sheriff mentioned as surplus within ten of donating them to Glugstat.
Okay.
That, I think, and allow us to make it happen.
Okay, the whole, the whole number or just the, so?
Whatever number, with it, whichever, whichever number vehicles you wanna declare a surplus.
Wouldn't it be best to wait and see what four vehicles you're talking about and seeing what the worth is?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure to see what the worth is, because I hear what you're saying.
Yes.
What we've done with the other cities.
Right.
As far as getting something back.
Okay.
And you gotta understand what the worth is, that you're, that you're trying to trade, swap.
I thought the sheriff, could you, I thought you were saying there's four that may be made available pretty quickly.
Eleven fit.
Of that, of.
No, we're, we're, we're replacing worst to, to best, basically. Uh, and, and the, the better ones would be toward the tail end of the replacement, obviously. And I, I don't have a value that I could tell you right now what they would be worth.
See, that's what I'm saying. If, if they're four of our worst, um, to me, looking at it legally, I mean, that's what you wanna donate. Uh, and then, uh, perhaps the Glugstat will have the financial wherewithal to improve those vehicles, to improve them, make them better. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the, this donation law is supposed to be about, you know? So now, if you want to donate vehicles that are much improved, then the value goes up, and then we'd have to decide how to equate them. So, I mean, to me, the worst is the best as far as that. And then work with them to, to get them real worthy.
So we could make a motion to declare them surplus and ask you and Shelton to work on a value?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be my motion.
Yeah, and bring back the serial number of what for.
Right, we don't, we don't know what to surplus right now.
Yeah. Motion by Trey, uh, the second. Second by Sheila. Another discussion.
Now, you, hold on one second.
Uh, you're finna say that, Ronnie, you had a motion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand the motion.
You want me to repeat the motion?
Yes.
Declare four sheriff's office vehicles as surplus, and direct the county administrator and the board attorney to negotiate their value with the mayor of the city of Glugstat to allow donation of said vehicles.
Transfer.
Yeah, I don't think donation was in there.
Yeah, transfer, don't say transfer.
Transfer, allow transfer, okay?
Transfer.
Said vehicles. Is that, that your motion, Mr. Baxter?
Yeah.
All right, we got the motion straight now, by Trey and second by Sheila. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion carried.
Okay.
Uh, what next here, uh, Shelton?
Yeah, let's not do it.
Mr. President, Supervisors, I'd like to draw your attention to item number sixty. This is a request by the Adult Drug Court, Judge Arthur. You are being asked to approve two actions related to a grant for Adult Drug Court. Number one is the approval of the application for the grant.
Number two is pre-approve acceptance of the grant. At this time, there have been no terms of the grant provided to the county. I would suggest to you that you approve only the application and hold approval of additional actions until such time that you know the terms of the grant.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Second item, I'm sorry, sir, the second item is, uh, requesting a grant application for Juvenile Drug Court by Judge O'Neil. You are being asked for three actions related to a grant application for Juvenile Drug Court. Number one, approve the application for a grant. Number two, instruct the administrator to provide whatever is necessary in completing the process. And number three, pre-approve the acceptance of the grant. Again, since there have been no terms of the grant provided to the county, not knowing the cost or match requirements, I suggest that you approve only the application for the grant and hold approval of additional items until such time that you know the terms of the grant.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Item number sixty-two is a request from the Madison County Democratic Committee. They are asking to be paid for their, uh, work in the upcoming, uh, primary elections. I ask that you acknowledge this letter, because I'm not aware of any statute that would allow you to pay the Democratic, uh, or Republican, uh, committee members for their work.
Make a motion for our knowledge.
Motion by, uh, Gerald, second by Trey, that's Trey, Sheila, to acknowledge it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Motion carried.
Yippee doo.
Uh, all right, running right along. Got our cup trolley, Nassan.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have item number sixty-three, which is approval of the budget amendments and the inter-fund cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval.
All right, motion by Gerald, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And before I go to item number sixty-four, this morning I received an invoice from MACIT for the county's property, um, insurance for the general liability, public officials errors and omissions, auto liability, and a cyber risk in the form of eight hundred nineteen thousand five hundred seven dollars and ninety cents, and I'm asking the board approvals to pay that.
Motion by Carl?
Yeah, second.
Second by Gerald?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next items, sixty-four through sixty-six, which is the approval of the general claims docket and two payroll dockets.
Motion for approval?
Motion by Gerald, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Item number sixty-seven is the approval of the Flicor claim docket.
Motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
And item number sixty-eight, I'm asking the board to declare the three items listed as surplus, authorized disposal, and to sell asset number one zero nine seven four, which is a K-nine insert to the City of Madison for its cost of two thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
What did we just get to City of Madison?
Hang on, I'll, I'll tell you.
Okay, all right. Uh, come on, whoever next, my computer will come up.
Me, nothing was present, nothing was present.
All right, now to Sheriff.
Okay, what, uh, Mr. Nassan was just, uh, asked for approval on was a, a K-nine insert, uh, as you recall, we used to have two K-nine units. We had a, an individual, uh, retire from the Sheriff's Department, and, and we retired the K-nine, if y'all may remember here recently.
Okay.
We had already ordered, uh, an additional, or new inserts for their new vehicles that were coming in. Uh, obviously, we ordered two. Now, we only need one. Uh, luckily, Madison PD needs one, they couldn't find one, so we're selling the second one that we ordered to them, which is what you just approved for, Mr. Nassan.
All right.
Additionally, what I'm asking for is there's a heat alarm that goes with that, uh, that did not make it onto the agenda, uh, in time, which is our fault, it's Sheriff's Department. Uh, that is, uh, thirteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, what I would ask is that we sell them that heat alarm with it, along with half of the shipping cost for that item. Uh, that way, we're not stuck with that, that cage and this heat alarm, so we're getting our money back. If you, if you don't mind, uh, that total would be, uh, fourteen hundred twenty-four dollars and eight cents.
Move. Motion by Carl, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. What else, High Sheriff?
Secondly, on, uh, April the eighteenth, uh, this board, you, you approved a, uh, a personnel action form for Mika Hamer. Uh, we inadvertently, uh, put the wrong date on that personnel action form as April the fifth of this year for her starting day. It should have been April the fourth, which shorted her a day of pay. I would ask that we could make that correction in the minutes and, and authorize the, uh, payroll clerk to, to adjust her pay accordingly.
Mr. President, can we do that as in not the pro ton?
Did we hear motion for that number pro ton?
Yeah.
Motion by Sheila?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You got it, Ronnie?
Yes, sir.
All right, there, Sheriff.
Next, you may recall, uh, we went through the advertising process. Uh, Mike and I, uh, went through a lengthy process of having some of the property declared abandoned, and we went through the, uh, auction process, uh, and had some, uh, property purchased. Uh, I don't know what happened. We, we, it just didn't make it into the minutes for the disposal of that property. I just need to make sure that we get that into the minutes. Uh, it, it's for the disposal of that property that was auctioned. I don't remember the date of the auction.
Mr. Sheriff, did the, did the minutes declare it a surplus?
It was declared as surplus and, and ordered for disposal on the video, but it just didn't make it into the minutes.
Okay, s, I haven't watched the video, Mr. President, but if that's the, and, uh, I hate...
Not pro ton those minutes again, or we can just do a second motion?
Look, easier today to do a second motion, to declare the item surplus and authorize disposal.
Carl, I made that motion?
Yeah, I made that motion.
Sheila, you second?
Yeah.
Second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And lastly, I have two requests for, uh, payments from, uh, MDOC. The first, uh, for January billing of twenty twenty-two. They owe us twenty thousand seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the sec, the second from February, fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars and eighty-six cents.
Yeah, move on.
All right, motion by Carl, second by Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, High Sheriff, uh, old business.
Well, I think the committee that we formed, Mike, that would be probably under old business, uh, the, well, we had formed a committee to, uh, help manage and, and, uh, the funds and direction in which we go in terms of the, uh, uh, floodwaters that those files are coming from. Is that rural development?
Yeah.
Go ahead and, and, and explain it. It's rural development, it comes from, so...
Good morning, board. The, uh, board is, three members of the board of supervisors, uh, along with the lawyer, and the other parties, two engineers, uh, who were authorized to go to Washington last week to talk about, uh, to meet with members of the federal government, the Senate delegation from Mississippi, the, uh, and the USDA, Office of Natural Resources and Conservation Service, to talk about the, uh, what they call the WFPO, which is, uh, Watershed Flooding Prevention Act. That's what we received, there's substantial amount of monies from them, and so we went to speak with those that made this decision about next steps. Uh, we also were there in that meeting to also talk with senior members of the Rural Utility Service, which is a part of the Rural Development Administration of USDA about broadband and northeast mindset. I'd like to report to you that, uh, and the supervisors are free to comment on this, but I thought, I thought that meeting was excellent, because they recognized that we did receive twenty million dollars in round two of these infrastructure, by part of the infrastructure grants, we received ninety, twenty million dollars. In round one, we'd previously received fifty-five thousand dollars for investigation, and I believe we also received three point two million dollars. That's kind of murky. But we know we got, uh, twenty million plus, and to my understanding, they told us that was the start of it, because that, that money is for planning and design. And then, um, if, if we, they told us if we were to come back here and, uh, forego the fifty-five thousand, which was the planning, we could move right into the design.